...of the community in the political process. I'm Dwayne Gainer with the Friends of Leavenworth. And we actually decided to do this by encouragement from former council members as well as, in fact, when Brad Hawkins met with the Friends of Leavenworth, he encouraged this concept as well. So we're really excited that we can do this. We'd already planned it before Brad suggested it because we want you to feel like you get to know the candidates before you vote. And we are hoping that this can also be recorded. And when it's recorded, we'll try to place it on the web and let you know more. Just look to the Friends of Leavenworth for more information. We try to move things quickly here in the project of Friends of Leavenworth meetings. And to start with, I want to give you sort of the agenda. Introduction. Then we're going to have the candidates are going to give their personal introductions and qualifications. Following that, we're going to have the candidates share their statements of what their vision is, to tell you a little bit about what they see as issues that we have in the valley or in Leavenworth. And then we're going to have a few, a couple of questions on resident business balance. Then we're going to allow for audience questions. And what's important about the audience questions are because there, some of them, we've already gotten some, they're the same. We don't want to have those repeat, and we have a limited amount of time. So if you have a question, please come fill out that card and then give it to the lady, one of the ladies or somebody there. And we will then combine those and ask some questions. Especially if we have a lot of questions, we'll get those that have the most requests. Also, we are really going to try to get done here pretty close to eight o'clock if we can, which will then also allow you time to visit with the candidates as well. So to start out with, I'm going to introduce those candidates here that are on the panel. And the reason they're separate isn't because there's some sort of conflict. The problem is that apparently the lights in the center of the stage aren't working for some reason tonight. So we're trying to keep them in the spotlight, shall we say? So that's why they're here in those various places. On the far end there is Scott Bradshaw. Next is Carl Floria. Next is Leno Watson. Then is Jason Lundgren. Then is Craig Hess, Anne Hesberg, Mia Bretz. And then there's the mystery person. So we actually have another candidate that is in opposition to Mia, and it is Zeke Reister. Unfortunately, Zeke had a medical emergency in California and has been in the hospital for two weeks. So he though, because he's so dedicated, he is calling in and his son will be taking the calls and taking the questions and Zeke will respond to you. So he is still here in spirit as well as in voice. So that's what's coming next. So first, this was a great concept that I read in the book by Ted Price on Miracle Town. It's sort of like the Bible of Leavenworth when you're trying to know the history. And in 64, Bob Rinder said, "We must develop from the study," that is the life study, "a sound plan for community action. It is necessary for full development of the community resources and to create that spirit of unity and citizen alertness which is needed to make the action program a permanent success. And above all, we must act to assure the continued health, safety, general welfare, and spiritual life of all our people." And so in that idea of unity and neighborliness, that's why we're here together. So a few ground rules. Remember, we are neighbors. So these people are very cordial people. And so our hope is that there will be a good decorum within the group. We ask that you don't boo or clap to try to keep the time moving along. And also, put yourself in their position. I wouldn't want to be on the hot seat myself. So as we ask questions, we want to make sure that, sure, we're going to touch the issues, but we're here really looking at these folks as our neighbors. So that's an important part that we want to preserve. And so that we can be most expedient, concise, and non-repetitive with audience questions, please post those questions in the question box and we will combine the questions and pose them to the candidates. So candidate introductions. To begin with, each will go one at a time along the line here. Please provide us with an introduction of yourself, your background, experience, and assets for serving in the position that you're running for, and what motivated you to run for this office? Mr. Bradshaw. And Mr. Bradshaw will introduce that. Good question. By the way, the two, how you'll know this, the two at the end are mayors. Well, hope to be mayors.
Good evening. My name is Scott Bradshaw. I'm running for mayor. I'm a Leavenworth native. I was born in the old Cascade Sanitarium that's now the Dosona House Building. And I've lived here before the transformation. My mom was a member of the Vest of Women's Club who basically were the ones that started the life program and were very instrumental in getting the whole transformation started. As a teen, I worked, also worked on several remodels. So I've been here and I know some of the skeletons are in some of those buildings. When I graduated from high school, I went to the Navy, had a tour duty in the Navy, went to college and got a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering. And I am also a registered professional civil engineer. I have had a long, successful career in the utility industry, working for Puget Sound Energy, Shalane PUD, the city of Palo Alto, and Cudahontas County. In those roles, I had up to 270 employees reporting to me, and I managed engineering and operations for up to five utilities: water, gas, wastewater, electric, and telecom. And my role, also, I managed very large budgets. I had a budget of $10 million O&amp;M budget and up to $60 million construction budgets. I've also managed closely water and wastewater and gas. I'm an active member of the Leavenworth Royal Bavarians, also the Alpha Autumn Lee Festival Association. I'm also in the planning commission where I've, sorry, Dwayne. I'm also a member of the planning commission and also the advisory commission for the traffic study that's going on right now. Hope that's enough.
Okay. Thanks. Carl.
Well, I have not been here as long as Scott has, but my wife and I did come here in 1985 when our oldest son was in first grade. So we had three sons. They all went through all 12 grades here at Cascade. I'm one of those very fortunate people who has been able to weld their passion with their work. My passion has always been community, building and sustaining community. And I was able to do that first, coming here as the pastor of the Lutheran Church, gave me that opportunity. And then through the founding and directing of Upper Valley Mend, and then the founding director of Shared Community Land Trust to do affordable housing. Again, my passion has always been community and I've been able to weld that. So I feel very fortunate. But then because of that involvement in community and wanting to be, I also found other ways to get involved. I have served on the school board here, Cascade School District, when my kids were in school. Probably as much community-minded in building though, of being in those official positions as I also...
Okay, we need to wrap that up, please. Last comment.
And I've also been on the planning commission. I've also been on the city council on two different occasions. And I feel like I'm ready and prepared to take on the challenge of being mayor.
Okay. Leno.
I'm Len Watson. Everybody calls me Leno because of my middle name. My dad has the same first name. And I've lived in Leavenworth for 47 years. My dad was born here too. My family has the oldest, still family-owned store downtown, Alpanas Gifts, one of the first ones on the swap over. So Leavenworth means a lot to me and my family. I'm an electrician in town. It's my first time running for any public office, so I'm eager to learn and put myself out there to listen to what everybody has to say.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. My name's Jason Lundgren. I'm married. I have three daughters at Alpine Lakes and Ice Soul River Middle School now, which is kind of terrifying. I appreciate being here tonight a lot. I'm filling a two-year vacancy right now on the city council. One's Gretchen Warren left, and I think it was my third or fourth attempt trying to get on the city council. If nothing else, I'm persistent. But yeah, when my family and I aren't, when we can get away from school and soccer and other commitments, we're out camping and fishing around the state where we do a lot of outdoorsy things. I graduated with a bachelor of science degree, and I went into forestry and then fisheries. For the last 17 years, I've been doing stream restoration around this state, working for nonprofits and the state, managed all kinds of different budgets and things like that. And I'm really lucky because like Carl, I have a huge passion for what I do, bringing people and resources together for the betterment of the environment. So it's a really challenging job, both socially and technically. I work with a lot of different scientists and regulatory agencies.
If you can wrap it up.
What's that?
If you can wrap it up.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just, I have a song to finish off with. Is that okay?
We'll do that later.
So anyway, yeah, I've been on the city council for two years, and there's a really steep learning curve, you know? I've been trying to play catch-up really for the last two years, and I'm starting to feel settled in and a part of the team and...
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Craig.
Craig Hess. I might have the shortest amount of tenure here in this town. I've only been here for six years. Retired military, 30-year Air Force officer. Dad was also 30 years, so I don't have a hometown to say, yeah, here's where I have deep roots. But I moved here six years ago hoping to establish those for my daughter, who's now in high school. Spent a lot of time during my first two years here observing the city council and went to virtually every city council meeting and study session there to learn. My job in the Air Force, I went in right at 18, enlisted communications guy, didn't want to go to college, did four years of night school, and got a bachelor's degree in computer science. Two master's degrees, international relations in public administration. Don't put a lot of stock in degrees themselves, but if you have some experience to go ahead and marry up with that degree, I think it's beneficial. So 30 years in a big bureaucracy, and I think I have a lot of ideas to help this town move forward.
All right, thanks.
I'm Anne Hesberg. Thanks to the Friends of Leavenworth for putting on this event and for the community members to be involved in this great government process. I grew up in Winachi, and I spent a lot of my childhood here in Leavenworth on the weekends, exploring and adventuring with my family. And I worked on the fire crew when I was in college here to pay for school. And when I graduated and got a job in the valley, I knew that this is exactly where I wanted to put down my roots. And so I started getting involved in this community. I've been a member of the residential advisory committee since its inception 10 years ago. I've been on the planning commission for nearly 10 years. I'm on the board of the Leavenworth Mountain Film Festival, and we raise money and funds for the Ski Hill Memorial Project, which is near and dear to my heart. I also chair the recently formed planning, or the parking advisory committee. And I'm a member of the Leavenworth Community Farmers Market, MEND, and the Shalane Dux Land Trust, organizations that I find particularly grounded for the betterment of our community and our valley. I decided to run because over the course of the last few years, people have asked me to do so. And since I finished my terms with the land trust board, I had some available time, and so I decided to run this year.
Thank you. Mia.
Hi there. I'm Mia Bretz, and I live here in Leavenworth with my husband and our three kids, who are eight, 10, and 12, like Jason. We are in the middle school years. So we are trying to figure out how to make life here work by working in healthcare and education. My husband's a nurse, and I work for Mountain Sprouts, which is an environmental education program for kiddos two to seven years old. So, you know, we love serving our community through our careers and our work as well as just being a part of it. This place has really grown to be such a wonderful home, such a great community. We moved here from Seattle a number of years ago, which is where I grew up. And I went to college there, at the University of Washington, and I got my degrees in natural resource economics and community environment and planning, which is a whole lot of mumbo jumbo to just say. I really like community development, and I really think government processes are critical, particularly when they're public-led, and they can really help boost our economy and make our livelihood more sustainable. I've been on the council for four years. This is my first term in public office. I never thought I'd run, but I really enjoyed serving, enjoyed working with the community. I geek out over city issues like sewer plants and new roads. So it's been a lot of fun to help our community better understand our public processes.
Great, thanks. And Zeke, now we'll see how this works. Zeke, can you hear me?
I can. How do I, how do I sound? Can you hear me, Dwayne?
Yep, we can. Thank you.
Okay. This is the first question about just introduction yourself, background.
That's right.
Okay. So, gosh, I really feel privileged to just at least have my voice get on stage there. And I'm just excited to be part of this whole process. I think that as for myself and my qualifications, I was born in Leavenworth, like a lot of folks my age, because that was the only hospital. But I grew up in Dryden, so I was in the Upper Valley. Dad had an 18-acre apple block. And so I'm thinking my qualifications came from wanting to, a sense of service. I've had 23 years as a public school teacher, 17 of them as a master's in social education, and serving the families here in the Upper Winachi Valley. And I guess there's a lot of reasons, you know, there's multiple reasons why you would want to...
If you can wrap it up, your minute is there.
Okay. Simply, we have a quality of life in this Upper Valley, and I want to see that Leavenworth remains a place that's worth living.
All right, thank you.
Let's kind of tie it to that.
All right, thanks so much. I think what I'll do is, I have never run a forum before. I've never been to any political thing. So what I will do to help you know when you're getting close, I'll raise my hand. Now, Zeke, you're going to have a problem seeing that, but I'll raise my hand so you know that you're coming close to time so that I don't have to interrupt you. You'll stop yourself. We don't have a clock up there, unfortunately, so. All right, next question. These are your introductions, actually. So you'll have three minutes to provide an answer to this question. Please provide us with an introduction of yourself. Oh, sorry, this is the same. I've gone the wrong direction. This is about vision. The issues that you, the issues that you see as important, please describe the following: the issues that you see as important to our community and our future, along with your vision, objectives, and specific measurable goals that you have for your term in office. And you have three minutes. So we'll start this time with Carl, I think, and we'll go down that way and then come back to you, if you don't mind.
First of all, I do really appreciate you coming out because I do think that if we're going to continue progress in this town, it's going to be because of engagement of its citizens. So it's really great to see you come out, and I'll promise you that I won't get anything done without people engaged. And so, you know, I look forward to working with the community. I'll summarize real briefly. It's really easy to say the gist of my run and campaign for mayor, and that is, we've done a great job transforming this community into a wonderful Bavarian village that's drawn lots of interest and lots of people and lots of money from the other side. And quite frankly, what it feels to me is that we've developed the commercial and business engine, but remember, that was done in order to save a dying community. And now that community itself, its ability to be a community, is threatened by that very salvation, if you will, of the Bavarian theme. And the reason is, is because we're drawing in lots of people want to be here. And that money, we can't compete with it with our economy, with the tourism economy. And so we're losing our workforce, our ability to house the people that work here. And that's bad for a community. It's bad socially. We need each other. We need the mix of ages and incomes and people. But it's also bad for business, businesses. There's a letter that was just given to the city, 24 businesses, big and small, from the school district to the hospital to, you know, saying, "We can't sustain, this is not good. We can't get enough help. The help we do get turns over too quickly. They're not happy when they got a commute." I mean, it's in all of our interests to be able to house our own workforce. And we've done nothing, we've done little. It's been benign neglect, if you will. And so what I really think, we need a second miracle. You talk about the miracle town. The miracle town was transforming and giving us an economic engine. Now we need a second miracle, and that is developing and focusing on the residential side because it's been kind of left behind in the smoke, if you will. It feels like the economic engine is a runaway train, and we need to get control of that again and make it sustainable, environmental. We got to keep, be good stewards of this beautiful place we have. So I think there's just a lot we need to do to refocus ourselves on the residential.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, two issues why it got me interested in running is probably what you hear people talk about is the communication between the city and the residents, and just the talking about people throwing out their information that they don't know about. Like people saying, you know, "The city doesn't want a parking garage. The city doesn't want this," which is not really the case in long run. You got to justify and pay for it. But the city could come out in January for a whole month, whatever, give you short-term goals, your long, you know, two-year goals, your five-year goals, your 10-year goals. So people have an idea what's actually coming. More information about what's on the radar would be great. And then the other reason I'm running, because you hear it all the time, is people commenting how their vote doesn't matter and what they think doesn't matter, and they're not in the city, so they don't get to say what happens, what happened in the city. I would, I love Leavenworth. I hope everybody loves Leavenworth. I would love to grow the city. I mean, I think we need to annex in everybody that wants to be annexed in. And if you don't, then you're not helping the situation either by your opinion. We can still listen to what you have to say, but when it comes down to it, you have to do what's best for the city. And the city's got to survive in making money, and a lot of money doesn't come from property tax. And it'd be great if the city would show where all the money comes from and how we have all these great parks and we have the golf course, you know, where most people don't have a golf course that the city owns. We have a lot of things, and it's paid for by tourists, by everything else coming through. So you have to have that balance between everybody. So I just hope that down the road, we can all think about being part of the city and annexing, because it wouldn't take much to annex a lot of property in.
Thank you.
I have to write things down. I get, I get a little bit flustered sometimes, public speaking, but I think that you'll hear really similar themes among us, that our challenges are around growth, and those, that growth is presenting a lot of burden on our infrastructure, our natural environment, our neighborhoods, our waste stream. And the growth is also an opportunity. And we have a lot of jobs and we have a lot of income, a lot of income that small towns our size don't have, that they wish that they have. So what I hear, I mean, these questions were asked of us to present our values and our priorities, but hopefully what we're saying are really representative of your values and your priorities. So I tried to kind of create my response based on things that I hear from people that reach out to me. And I think it's all about finding that balance that Carl alluded to, that we've put a tremendous amount of energy. And I think a lot of our bandwidth is taken up by festivals and downtown and everything like that. And I get the sense from the people I talk to, again, you know, these are, this is how I form my opinions and my path forward is listening to people in the community. And I think that the top priorities that I hear about are keeping Leavenworth safe and a relatively affordable place to live, and addressing these infrastructure issues like parking and traffic in neighborhoods and streets, parks and athletic fields. And I do believe, now that I've been on the inside for a couple of years, that the city is actually being more proactive than people think. And I know that bureaucracy is painful to watch and listen to, and I know that people turn up their eyes when they hear about another committee or another study. But that's how you get to solutions that are feasible and more widely accepted. So the city is working on a bunch of initiatives right now to tackle these things. They're not going to solve all of our problems, and they're not going to be perfect, but the city is proactively dealing with the hot topic issues that you have and that I've heard about. I think, you know, for me, I kind of come from an environmental restoration field, and I do get concerned that we overlook the very thing that allows us to have a Bavarian village here. I mean, without our mountains and our greenways and our river, we wouldn't be able to have a Bavarian theme. And so I want us to protect and embrace those things as part of our asset as well. And I think that, you know, talking about taking another fresh look and the next revitalization is really about embracing a more diverse economy too, to the extent possible. I mean, you see it when cars are rolling into town. A lot of people are coming here to recreate. That's a great thing. It's also something that present, it's an opportunity and it's also a challenge. So, thank you.
Just before you start, Craig, just so that the audience understands, the two at the end are running for mayor. The next two are running for position one. Craig is running unopposed. Anne is running unopposed. And Mia and Zeke are going for which position? Position seven. So just a little bit of background so you know who's who and how they're connected. All right, thank you, sir. Yeah. I'll go here and then we'll come back. That way I can keep track of it in my mind. Thank you.
Okay, actually, I'm going to tie into what both Carl and Jason said, slightly different vein, I suppose. And I'm going to actually sprinkle just a few of my past experience qualifications in there because a one-minute intro and all that just doesn't cut it, Dwayne. So my next-to-last job in the military was deputy group commander for mission support, oversees Aviano II F-16 squadrons. Under that 2,400-person group, we had logistics, security forces, civil engineering, fire department, billeting, lodging, gymnasiums, manpower, personnel, communications, did I say that? Community. Our mission support group supported a community of 10,000. So I do have experience in those areas, albeit not perhaps on the civilian side. And that's why I was so interested in sitting in for the first two years of my time here to understand what makes this city tick. And I gave them all kinds of kudos for resurrecting themselves from, you know, near death to what it is today. I stumbled on this town in 1999 and fell in love with it, put it on the, "Keep this in mind for retirement" because I'm a free agent and I have no hometown, and I ended up here in 2013. Really moving here at the end of my retirement was light at the end of the tunnel for me for my last 10 years in the military. I could not wait to get here. When I did get here, I realized, oh, a lot has changed since 1999. And in the past six years, I think a lot has changed. And it's almost one of these, whatever that term is, one of those curves like that, exponential. And four years ago, you know, it doesn't take too long to be a resident here to see that there's a little bit of, I don't want to say conflict or whatever, but, you know, between business and residential, I always see an eye to eye on a variety of issues. I had a website for a short while that was, you know, Citizens of Leavenworth, basically an engagement website, but I think it was before its time, before FOL came into existence. Had a bunch of subscribers, talked about some good issues, got some good ideas and whatnot. But again, didn't have the time to devote to it as, you know, a one-man band here. I think FOL's done a really good job. They've kind of picked up on a lot of the same things, themes, engagement, communication that I was big on. We tend to do that very well in the military, and I just have ideas on how we can improve that here in this, in this setting. But back to what Carl and Jason said, I do think there's a revitalization or a second coming of what made this community fantastic under Project Life. And I read both of those books, The Miracle Town and the other sepia-colored book. And I was fascinated. I was fascinated that this town did what it did, pulled off what it pulled off in the epic fashion that it did. But I do think there is a tipping point. And I do think we are approaching that, if not already there. And I do think we need to diversify what it is we focus on. And it's not all Front Street, and it's not all the business, and it's a lot of the natural resources that I think we're blessed with. And I think we need to also get back to focusing on the residential, to the neighborhood. I do have a strong feeling about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
There's something that I love about this community. You go into Dan's, you wander into Safeway, and you always bump into people in the aisles that just wanna talk to you about something. And over the course of the last couple of years, people have stopped me to talk in the aisles about issues in our community. And I've been listening and I've been taking notes and I've been trying to address those as best I can. And running for city council is one of those ways that I feel that I can really help take care of some of those issues. There are many issues in our community that we're facing right now, and none are more important than the others. From affordable housing to development standards, the need for community green space and gathering places, particularly above the north, north side of the highway, to parking issues, residential road improvements, and the traffic that we face, particularly during, during our festival seasons. It's my goal to address these types of issues during my term on the city council and work with the community to find agreeable solutions. On the planning commission, we've been dealing with affordable housing for the past couple of years. This has been on our docket. And we've been working tirelessly on trying to figure out how to define it for our community specifically, and to tailor language and code that can encourage the development of affordable housing here in our community. We've also been working on development standards. And we're in the process of working on those right now. They haven't gone through full adoption yet. But I've really loved how the community has come out to the planning commission meetings and really interacted with us to let us know exactly what you want. The planning commission has on their docket for the remainder of this year to also discuss peak traffic and how that impacts the development, future development within our community. I also look forward, as a future city council member, to work with the Osborne School site. I believe it has, is a great prospect for the community, for green space, and possibly a community center, depending on, on the property available and the desire of the community and its residents. As a member of the Parking Advisory Committee, we're just getting started, but there are some really great solutions that we're working on that came out of the recent parking study. And I'm pretty excited about those. So, yeah, I'm really looking forward to serving all of you. And thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
So it was a really hard decision for me to run for office again, because I've increased my work a lot lately. And, and the demands of a city council member can be large, especially when I have as many interests as I do. I keep signing up for committees and I gotta stop that. But eventually I, well, to be honest, I actually filed to run with the thought that I might drop out, because I wanted to leave my options open. But I only recently just decided for sure, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna commit, I'm gonna make it work. Worked with my coworkers on that, because the, the issues are many. There are so many things that we're currently working on and that I've been working on for the last four years. And government process is slow. And it's slow on purpose, because we need public participation and we need to really go through the layered steps in order to make sure that the actions that we take are really representing our community. So in four years, I feel like I've done a lot, but I also feel like I'm just getting started. So I'm excited to be running again. You know, I've served on the Economic Development Committee, Public Works, Parks, and then just recently on Housing and Public Safety, also on the Parking Committee. And, and then I'm on a few other boards and stuff too. But the point is, there, there's a lot of different things going on. I think if I had to really summarize and target the things that are the most important to me, I would say communication is the number one. And my second one is housing, because I believe that we're in a housing crisis right now here in Leavenworth. So in terms of communication, when I first started my term, I hit the ground running with trying to do everything I could in my power to open that door and have a lot more voices going on, a lot more understanding. So I started out with building a website that described committees and committee work, because actually that's where the details happen. And a lot of people are going into council meetings and they're like, "What is happening? What's going on?" I say something, it's not responded to. And it can be really frustrating. So I wanted to kind of open the door to committee work, because that's really the essential place that, where things happen. And then I've also held office hours almost weekly for the whole time. And that's been also a really wonderful place to actually have deeper conversations and dialogue, answer questions, hear great, great suggestions and advice and concerns. And lots of those have made it into committee and, and taken steps forward in progress. So I think where we have to grow on that still is working as a whole council and a whole city to kind of change the flavor. I think we've already started with that, with a whole new development department. We have three new staff just within the last year and change. And, and they're all really great. They're working well with our community and that's been a great step. And the other big step our council took this year was the summer barbecue. And, and that was so fun. That is a place where that, it's a, it's a public, a meeting of the public rather than a public meeting, right? So it's a meeting of the public to get to dialogue, rather than a public meeting, which is just for, for, for viewing. So, is that timed or is that?
Timed.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Zeke, can, yeah, Zeke, are you there still?
I am. I am here, Dwayne.
If you've got three minutes, if you can just watch that on your hospital bed clock. If not, I'll, I'll interrupt you at three, about five till.
Okay, and this is the number, this is the, your vision objectives and specific measurable goals for your term? Is that the one?
That's correct.
Okay. So, for me, I think that, um, what's really important is a, a communication, an intentional communication between the business core downtown and the people who live in the communities, which often is one and the same. But I think that there can be a lot of allowances there where these two groups can be brought together. We have a Chamber of Commerce, and I think what we need desperately in this town is a Chamber of Community, where we are able to bring issues forward to the council, not on every, every meeting, but I think it's really important that because of other issues that have happened in this community, and the impacts of a thriving downtown core on, on the neighborhoods, that this is really facilitated. This, this is like given a high priority. I think that this would lead, there's a lot of trust to be built, a lot of questions to be answered. And I think it all can be done. I think that was the whole idea of, of the original planners of life, Leavenworth Improvement for Everyone. I think we need a new version of that, as we've got a thriving downtown core. And we've got to get ourselves to a place where people are, you've got their thriving business, and you've got a, a community that's protected, that has affordable housing, a reliable water system, because I think we're headed for some real issues with the present water system we've got. And I think that, to keep it on track here, Dwayne, I'm not sure where I'm at. I think I got a little time yet. That it's really essential to make that participation and invite that participation into the city council. And if, and that we use, we're generating a lot of hotel, hotel tax and LAP funds that can be probably used a little more broadly for the people who live here and are impacted by, naturally impacted by a thriving, successful downtown core. And I think that those things at the council, it's our responsibility to intentionally bring those up, get those out, and show that we are listening to the community.
Five seconds.
And that, uh, it's, it's a place that, this is an incredible, an incredible place to live. It's just, you don't have to go far. Everybody, everybody in the room knows that. That's why they're here.
All right, your, your time is up there, Zeke. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Bradshaw.
Thank you. First of all, I, I wanna reiterate something Ann said. This is a, this is great, see all you folks out here participating in the public process. This is what makes the public process work and makes it, makes it an effective way to govern. I see Leavenworth as being a victim of its own success. We have a number of issues that have arisen because of how successful we've become. But I see the four main issues as being the, the big ones that we need to really focus on. That's parking, traffic, housing, and infrastructure. All of those issues are, are things that, that affect everybody in the community and in the outlying community, even as far as down the valley. So those are issues that we need to deal with. I see some of the goals that I have would be to improve the parking, have a, have a parking plan established. We have a parking study going on right now. And I've seen some of the preliminary information on that. And it's a great start. And I think we need to take a look at that study and memorialize it and put it into a firm plan. We also have issues with housing. We're actively working in the planning commission on implementing and making the code changes that need to be made to help incentivize our developers to help increasing, increase our housing inventory, which is a big key. We are working hard in the planning commission. And I expect as, from the council, to give good, solid direction to the planning commission, so that we do have a good, solid housing plan come out of this, with tools that our developers can use to, to build and incentivize good, good housing mix. Infrastructure is a big deal to me. I'm a, I'm a infrastructure type of guy. That's what I've, my career's been. And I see us needing to really take a hard look at our infrastructure. We can't have a, a larger housing inventory without having good infrastructure to support it. We need to make sure our water system, our sewer system, our storm systems are adequate. We need to make it sure that our, our streets are able to hold up under the adverse weather conditions we have. We need to take a hard look at all of those things and come up with us, with an infrastructure plan that, that meets the growth that, in housing that we're, we're trying to accomplish. Lastly, there's traffic. I'm on the advisory committee for the traffic corridor study that is happening now between Cole's Corner and Apple Annie's down in Cashmere. Tomorrow is a meeting of this advisory committee. I'll be there, talk as part of the, see some of the recommendations that come out. I've already seen the preliminary information and it's, it's interesting and needs more, it needs a lot more work. Anyway, Dwayne, first, communication, that's my big deal. Let's talk, let's come out, let's interact with this commission, this council, talk to us, we'll listen, and we'll try to implement and work with you to do these things that we see are, are necessary to help us stay a good, solid place to live.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your answers very much. We appreciate that vision and the, and what you see as issues. One of the things that the Friends of Leavenworth did about six months ago, we did a survey to see what are the issues that our people saw and thought this might be useful, if you haven't seen this before. These are the things, out of the 220 people that responded, indicated that those top issues are many of the things you talked about. Traffic, parking, lack of resident focus, environment damage potential. Those are some of the top things that troubled. So it's great to hear that you responded to many of those things. So relating to the business, sorry, the business and residence balance. There appear to be some significant gaps at times between the needs of the businesses and the needs of the residents, especially relating to the, their quality of life. Can you tell us how you envision practically bridging those gaps, those gaps, and how you prioritize those different groups' needs? So we'll start with Leno. And you have two minutes.
That's a tough question. I would have to start off by saying, the citizens always come first. It's what makes a city. We wouldn't be a city with just a business and no community. I think that it's, I can't say much more than, I mean, it's, it's a rough one. It's gonna take a lot of time, a lot of studying, a lot of listening to people that come in to talk to the city about, you know, what it's gonna take to bridge that gap. We both have to get along. I mean, the businesses, the community, you can't have one without the other, really. And for the citizens to survive, it'd be hard to do it without businesses and same vice versa. So I'd have to say, that's a tough one. I would have to study more into it and listen to what more people ought to say.
Okay. All right, thank you. Jason?
I'm gonna be the guy to ask you to repeat the question, because I'm gonna have to come down to the audience, otherwise.
There appears, there appear to be some significant gaps between the needs of the businesses and the needs of the residents, especially relating to their quality of life. Can you tell us how you envision practically bridging those gaps and how you prioritize those groups' different needs?
That's a good one. I wish you gave that one to us ahead of time. I think that it comes down to meeting in the middle somewhere. Facebook is, you know, it turns out, Facebook isn't a healthy place to have community dialogue. Who knew? But I think that the community supports the businesses in more ways than the businesses might know and vice versa. So I think it's gonna take a pretty monumental effort and some leadership to reach across and shake hands and have more dialogue together. I think that the life project that was done is fascinating, when the community came together and looked at a vision for what they wanted of the future. I think that's lacking a little bit. We, the city, myself, we point to the comprehensive plan. It's a 200-page document. Most of us can't get through it ever. But I think the point is, is that we need to have more facilitated dialogue. I would, you know, the city, we began a few months ago engaging in somebody to help us bridge that gap. And I think we need that. I think we need to have facilitated dialogue so that we're pulling the rope in the same direction. The divisiveness that we hear about, and, you know, it kind of pops its head out on social media and stuff like that, I don't think that's necessarily representative of everybody that lives together. I don't think that's really representative of how we feel about one another. We all live next to business owners. Some of us work downtown. We have kids on the same soccer team. Like the, the gap is not as big as one would think. But it's gonna take a concerted effort and leadership on part of the city administration, on part of the chamber. And instead of having this like, "We want more, we want less," you know, I think we really just, we need to sit down together and talk and not be in our silos.
Okay, thank you. Great.
I think we can take some steps to help shape our business environment. And this is one thing that I think I might be able to add to the council. It's not a mayoral position. It's not like, you know, you're a body of one and you get to make decisions. Council member, you're one of seven, hope to be able to persuade, influence the other six on the, on the council. But help shape the business environment a little bit, like, for example, one of the things that I'm super frustrated is, is, you know, alls you have to do is look at the DRB, the Designer Review Board Agenda, and you see how many more people are getting signs for their new alcohol establishment. I think per capita, Leavenworth's got, Jesus, too, too many alcohol establishments. And it's not unheard of to think of a creative solution to say, you know, "We can cap this." There's a lot of creative, creative solutions that other cities have done and implemented. Call it a best practice, if you will. But the verbiage is already over there, sitting on another city's municipal code, and we can adopt it. And I, I don't know, I think shaping the business environment a little better might help. I, I think some people are frustrated, I am, with, again, just the number of pure alcohol establishments here and the reputation that this town has. And I, I think we can better spend our lodging tax to, oops, sorry, I forgot to hit the timer. Are we still good?
You're good.
The lodging tax. I think over time, although the percentage of monies from our lodging tax going to the chamber has dwindled, it's still on the order of magnitude, about a million dollars or something like that. And my humble opinion is that there should not be any city monies going into some of the downtown activities without, you know, reaching deeper into the lodging tax, funding some of those commercial area activities, and using those extra dollars, not for advertising more activities and festivals here in town, but to, to fall back to some of the other projects within the neighborhood. Okay, there we go. Time's up.
Thanks.
Sometimes you get a sense that our community is a little bit divided, divided between the residents and the businesses. But I think we all have similar needs. And I think a lot of those needs came out in the survey that the Friends of Leavenworth had, as well as just communication that we've been having in establishments when we run into each other. Lots of similar needs, parking issues, traffic issues. These aren't specific to the residents. These aren't specific to the businesses. And I think coming together and addressing these... And I think coming together and addressing these through open dialogue, strong communication, can really bring us all together to the table to find solutions together. And that's what I hope to do, is encouraging that open dialogue and communication, encouraging people to invest a little bit of their personal time to come and join us at meetings and participate in the public process so that we do find solutions that are agreeable to our community, so that we can better serve both the residents and the businesses. I think that together we can become a stronger and better community, and I think we're off to a great start.
Thank you.
I also agree that there is not a drastic distinction between the residents and the businesses. I think our residents used to be a lot more connected to the businesses. They used to kind of run it, and a lot of the residents were involved in the parades, and they had their kids doing it. And as a lot of people have talked about tonight, our town has really grown a lot in the last number of years, and so that we're having a really different community experience where we're not all engaged in putting on the parades, and we have different priorities. So it's a new time of reflection, and I think that's maybe where the division has started, is that we're just on different planes, and we're doing different things, and we're not interacting enough. So I think Jason mentioned silos, you know, breaking apart the silos, communicating is the place to start. I don't know if it's well-known that the sales tax from our downtown shops funds the majority of our general fund. So most of our revenue is coming from the businesses. The property taxes don't, as our city administrator loves to say, even cover the cost of public safety in our town. So the economy here is essential to residential life. And on the flip side, the businesses need to be able to have a residential community that supports their business. Currently, the average wage of an employee is $20,000 less than needed to purchase the average home in Leavenworth. And that's from our Housing Needs Assessment that we did a couple of years ago. So in order for people to live where they work and to be able to afford to live here, there has to be collaboration. We want to live here and work here and play here and have a broad, well-rounded community. Because this was something of interest to me and really important, I heard this conversation. Is that a time or a warning?
Five minutes.
Okay. I joined, I've joined committees that have helped me really continue dialogue with both. I was on the Residential Advisory Committee for three years, and I've been on the LAP Committee, which is the Lodging Fund Committee, so I can work with the businesses on how to utilize our lodging tax for things, and really trying to be a connection for our community and to try and find more avenues to draw the community itself together in between these two silos that we have.
Right, thank you. Zeke, did you hear the question?
I believe the question was...
The question is, "There appear to be some significant gaps at times between the needs of the businesses and the needs of the residents, especially relating to their quality of life. Can you tell us how you envision practically bridging those gaps and how you prioritize those groups' needs?" Two minutes.
So, okay, thanks, Duane. I would just say, I think you start with a community meeting, and you find ones, they talk to each other. That's kind of where you started, that's how this thing started in the first place, that people talk to each other and express what it was they needed, and what their concerns was, what they were, you know, afraid of, and what they saw as a possible dream. And I think that both sides need to, whether they agree, and maybe they do, but they need to hear each other in the same room over more than one meeting. And that, given that, things might regenerate, a new genesis like we had back in the 60s, where, yeah, it's not the most comfortable thing, but it's a practical thing. And we've got things on the line in this community, and I believe that we start with the people we have, and that's where we start. And I think that's how you build that trust. I think that trust building is a real, critical issue, and I think we can solve. And I think we can listen to each other. I don't think that's Pollyanna. I think that's how diversified communities come to terms, and they'll need some, maybe a facilitator on both sides. But that's how you get there, as far as my vision, is that they talk to each other to start with, and they do it more than once, on scheduled meetings.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay? And that's basically it, Duane. That's where we start. We just need to start. Thank you.
Thanks. Scott?
Thank you, Duane. I see this as basically communicate, communicate, communicate. We need to make sure that the two groups are not looking at each other as separate groups. They both have essentially the same goal, which is to continue the success of our community. And the way to bridge that is get together and talk out those differences so that the people on both sides understand the needs of the other group. And as council members and as the mayor, that's our job to lead that effort so that the groups can communicate with each other and find common ground to work forward for the continued success of Leavenworth. Frankly, there's different communities throughout the country, and I've looked into a few of them that have come up with successful plans. I think we need to look into those, and frankly, I would rather steal it than reinvent it. So right now, I think that there's things out there we can do. We need to, again, communicate, 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 because I really feel strongly that this community and the business community, the community, living community, have essentially the same overall goal, which is continued success of this town.
Thank you very much. Carl?
Yes, I do agree that a lot of those differences are blown up or blown out, and sometimes you get, if you speak for the residents, it's like you're anti-business, or if you speak for the businesses, you're somehow anti-resident. And that's foolishness. We know we need a whole community. You need the economic engine, and you need the residential community. They both have to be functioning and in balance. And like I said earlier, I think they're out of balance, not because the business community's done anything wrong, it's because they've done so much right, they've taken off like crazy, but the residential community is being hollowed out by, right now, nearly 40% of residences' homes within the city limits are listed as vacant. And that doesn't mean they're boarded up. It means they're second homes. They're not a primary residence for a worker. And that is not a sustainable model for a community. If you want a functioning community, you've got to have both in balance, and that's what our real critical piece is. So I have in my platform saying, we need to come up with a new vision. We, just like they did when they re, got started the Bavarian community again, we need to revision again to get back into balance. And it's not just gonna be, and I appreciate the steps have been taken by the Planning Commission and trying to get more diverse housing types, but all that means is if we don't do something to capture those for our workforce, it's just gonna create more affordable second homes. We have to come up with a funding source that's ours, that's local. I've got a plan to do that, to tax our tourists that can help because they are creating the need for housing. Let's get them to help us supply some of the answers. But I do have a plan. We re-envision, we meet together, like Zeke had been saying. We need to meet together over several times. I've got the facilitator that'll help us to do that, to revision, what is a sustainable Leavenworth where it's in balance? What does that look like, and how are we gonna get there? Together! It's all about being together.
Okay, thanks. Leno? Did you start?
I started.
Okay, sorry. I'm losing track of myself. Next question. This came from the audience, as you might have guessed. "The proposed adventure park project on the corner of US 2 and Icicle Road is probably the most controversial project that this community has faced in over a decade. Do you believe this project belongs in Leavenworth or not? Please explain your answer." You have one minute. See, it would be...
Me, Dan. Thought we were gonna get softballs. Luckily, the council's made up of seven people, and hopefully, seven people bring, you know, their backgrounds and biases, and it balances out. By and large, what I have heard, again, this is just what I'm hearing, the community largely does not want the adventure park. I don't think that comes as a surprise. I've looked at the chamber survey. I think the chamber survey's bunk. I'm just gonna say that. Very few people responded to the survey. It's not, it's not a matter of whether or not the mayor or the council want this thing. It's a matter of, and this sounds like a bureaucratic answer, I get it, it's a matter of having the process in place that it goes through, and the projects that aren't meant to be here die, and the projects that are meant to be here make it. I, I'm a new guy here, I'm gonna pull that card right now, but it seems as though people that created the zoning for this, that is potentially gonna allow the project to go forward, may not have envisioned this thing. And because it wasn't envisioned, somebody came up with a creative idea to use for this hill slope. My personal, what, two seconds, two minutes?
You're done. But thank you very much.
That's actually probably a good thing.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Craig?
What Jason said, that saved me 60 seconds right there. I was asked to be drafted or whatever on the FOL, Friends of Leavenworth, I was on the board for X number of months before I threw my name in the hat for the city council here. I'm not a fan of the adventure park. I think it's a stellar idea in the wrong place. Lived in Europe for 15 years, I've seen incredible things built into the sides of those hills that work within a town, within a commercial zone, that would far better serve our community. But be that as it may, the adventure park people got as far as they did because the rules allowed. What I was sad to see was that the, when they pulled, when they pulled their packet the first time, you know, go back to the drawing board, tweak a few things, that we didn't go ahead and change some rules, modify some rules, look at the situation a little more closely at that time, because you know they're coming back. So, you know, why didn't we revisit that at that time?
Right, thank you.
I think one of the biggest silver linings about the adventure park process was that we were able to have a community process. If somebody had chosen to develop a hotel there, they would have been able to just submit for a building permit and move forward. Luckily, they chose a use that required a conditional use permit, and so that instilled a land use process that allowed for a public process and for the community to be involved. I don't feel warm and fuzzy about the adventure park. That said, the code does allow for that use, and if that's an allowed use that we don't want allowed in our community in the future, then we need to go through the proper channels to change that. I think that, I think that adventure park-type development would be really great at some ski resort or something where you have a really long, fun experience on slides that, you know, is gonna take you multiple minutes rather than a few seconds to get from top to bottom. But if that's not something that the community wants, then let's make some changes to the adopted code that we have, so that we don't have something like this that we're facing again in the future.
We all want a livable community, and I understand why the neighbors are concerned. And like Ann was saying, I also am super appreciative of the voices that we're able to discuss the specific issues for traffic, for lighting, for noise, for the things that we're concerned that this project could potentially bring. So I think that the project is better for the public process, and hopefully, the things that were changed will be sufficient, but we shall see. I also think this project is a bigger indicator of the shifts that we've kind of been mentioning so far tonight in our community, that years ago, this community was at a place where they thought roller coasters were a great idea for this town, and we don't think that anymore. We think we want a place that is for the residents, for people who can live here, work here, play here. So, yeah, as Ann was saying, I think this is an excellent opportunity to have community processes, to change our code, to reflect who we are.
Thank you. Zeke, you've got one minute. Did you hear the question?
No, I didn't quite hear.
The proposed adventure park projects, do you believe this project belongs in Leavenworth or not? Please explain your answer.
Okay. No, I don't believe the adventure park belongs in Leavenworth. I know the issues of property rights, but, you know, but the answer is no, I don't believe it belongs specifically at that corner of all places. I think there's, and I, why I don't believe it is that they don't have sufficient room for parking. I don't think they have sufficient, what would you call, allowances for the traffic that's gonna be there. And I think that there had to be some way where we, I know the code works, the code starts, the code answers things, but we have to look at the impact, there's a residential community right there, and so I think we might have failed ourselves on that one, especially when you, you might call it an emotional response, but that was an important emotional response in a public comment.
Five seconds.
So I just think, wrong place for that part. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Ratchoff?
Okay, first of all, I think this has been a wake-up call to become involved. One of the things I've noticed on the Planning Commission is since this event, or this project has occurred, we've had a tremendous increase in the participation, the public process with the city council and the Planning Commission. Before this event happened, we could not get hardly anybody to show up. Now we got people participating. So it's been a wake-up call, so thanks for that. Like Ann said, the code allowed it, the process allowed it. If the code and the, is, doesn't, is wrong, then we need to step back and look at changing the code. The process to change the code is there. So if that's what we need as a committee, let's do that. The other thing is, it's in the courts now. We'll hear soon what the court's decision is, and whether, whichever way the courts decide, we'll have to figure out a way to deal with it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Floria?
Yeah, and I'd just have to echo that it doesn't really matter what my opinion is. I personally don't think it's an exciting thing for me. The thing that I've heard a lot is it brings us too much into being, trying to be an amusement area instead of a Bavarian town with a beautiful area, natural area around it. It becomes more, feels more like trying to become a Disney World or something like that. But, but again, I have to echo, it's up to us, and that's why I say we need to do this revisioning, because the whole idea is you can overdo tourism. You have to look at what tourism you want. How do you want to bring them in? You've got a plan, and then you've got to put everything in line to make sure you get there. And that's why I said, we need that process together. What's that gonna, what's a sustainable future look like, and how do we get there together? And that's, that's the only way to do it. That's the only way to solve it. But I agree that it was so wonderful to see how many people got involved, and that's what it's gonna take, folks, to keep us from overdeveloping.
All right, thank you. Duane?
I have to start off by saying, I appreciate the fact that the city brought in an arbitrator and tried to look what the law says. I mean, I'm about the law and the way it sits. He came up with his opinion. We live in America, you know, if you don't agree with it, you took it to court, which you're doing, and that's everybody's right. It could have gone the other way. You could have took it to court and moved it on to somebody that knows a whole lot more than the council does, and if it goes through, we'll find a way to deal with it. People also forget that back in the day, Icicle Junction was there, they had a train that blew a whistle every 15 minutes, bumper boats going crazy all the time, and it didn't survive because it couldn't handle it. People, you know, people eventually didn't use it enough, and that's probably the same case that this can happen, and if it doesn't go through, then yeah, the council needs to look at changing the rules and trying to deal with zoning like that. But things mellow out, like the alcohol downtown. You already seen wineries leaving because there's only so much money to go around, and Leavenworth has its highs and lows in everything, and it'll balance out.
Great, thank you very much. So those are the questions that we had initially. Now we've got some from the audience that have been prioritized. Now we've got some from the audience that have been prioritized. I'm assuming because of the, the number of requests and stuff? Okay. This is not a one-man show. This is a whole Friends of Leavenworth board. So we're very much, and these from, those went to Kerbal first? I think Kerbal's the one who's kind of assembling them. Oops, so, sorry. Audience questions, here we go. First question, we'll give you a minute for each of these. Let's see, I think it would be, then Craig would be first. Please explain how you will provide leadership and make decisions when there are differing opinions and controversy?
All right, good question. I think Jason is the only other person who has said the word "leadership" tonight, I believe. And I meant to comment on that. I, I do think leadership is essential. And I, I'm not so sure that we have it on the group of seven right now. I mean, it always tends to be a collaborative thing, which is awesome in and of itself. But there does need to be some leadership somewhere. Perhaps the mayoral position or something like that. Somebody who can guide us through a process. I'm all about looking for more solutions than we look for. I mean, I think we punt far too easily and far too often. We have a decent budget that most other towns do not have. And we'll just go ahead and commission a study, and a study, and a study. And we pay money for other people to solve our problems. And I think we have seven smart people on council, or should have. And we are voted in to go ahead and solve problems on our own.
Okay, thank you.
Will you repeat the question?
My pleasure. Please explain how you will provide leadership and make decisions when there are differing opinions and controversy?
I will make decisions by actively listening and encouraging open dialogue between our community and its residents. I will use data to drive solutions through that open dialogue with the community to make those decisions. We're not always gonna see eye to eye, and that's okay. But if we are making decisions as a group, united as a community, through respectful dialogue and communication, I think that we can come to some common ground and find solutions that we find agreeable.
I think leadership is about relationships. And I have found a decent amount of disagreement in my four years on council. I have disagreed with various council members. I've disagreed with the mayor. I've disagreed with staff. But in the end, I can say that I feel that I have a strong working relationship with everyone because of building relationships together. So I think it's essential that if you're coming up against a tough issue and you're finding disagreement, to, to work it out together, to find an opportunity to talk about it. I can't explain how my perspective and my, what's it called? My perspective has changed from listening to others with the opposite perspective that I have. They, I've grown so much and learned so much from those differing views. So it's a really great opportunity when we disagree to be able to come to new understandings. And that's how we get to a more medium answer for our community.
Thank you. Zeke, you've got one minute to ask, to answer, how you will provide leadership and make decisions when there are differing opinions and controversy?
Okay. I would say that there's, first, you work at listening to the other person, whether you don't agree with that position or not. And you build a trust that, on small steps. It's, I think someone else might have said that there's sometimes is no way to resolve those differences. But the main thing you come away with is that you can talk to each other, you can hear each other out, and that you're, that there's not this grudge thing going on us against them. So, in every city council, in every county commissioner session, there's these issues of how the, how the team works together.
Five seconds.
I believe that promoting trust and willingness to listen is how you get there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ratchoff.
Well, first of all, the mayor doesn't have a vote. It's the, the council are the, are the voting members. But the mayor can influence the council. And I will encourage the council to study the issues, discuss those issues, communicate with the community and with their peers, and find the common ground. That's, that's the key. We've got some very smart, very capable people that are gonna be on this council. And as the mayor, my job would be to lead those people to find a, a solution that works for everyone, find that balance.
Thank you. Floria.
I think it is important, is if you're gonna be a leader, is to be, and I appreciate what Mia said, it is about relationship. And, and the strongest leaders that I know are what I would call servant leaders. They're not ones that are just in it for themselves. They're not ones that have a sense of, you know, their own ego is so big that they need to feed that. But they're there as a servant and in relationship to each and every one. One of the things that, that was my style of leadership when I was in the parish, we had a wide variety, as you can imagine, of opinions and, and ideas and politics and everything within a congregation. I happen to be one that gets fairly outspoken and will make stands that aren't very popular and sometimes get me in trouble. But what I was proudest of is in the midst of all of that, my leadership style was, don't do what I do. Don't have to agree with me. But we're in this together and I will support you to do what you need to do. And I was able to hold a community of, of a parish together who were very, very diverse, only had one walkout on me.
Okay, time, if you don't mind.
But it was, it was the leadership of being a servant and being open and respecting everyone.
I think it comes down to pretty basic, that it's about listening to people, finding out the information, what's the majority wants, what's best for the most people, checking your personal emotion at the door one way or another, because you should be able, as a council member, vote against yourself if it's best for the people and it's what the majority of people want. It's a tough thing to do at times, but I think personally, that's what it's all about. It's not about me, it's what's best for Leavenworth and the city and the people that live in Leavenworth.
That was a really, really good answer. I think that when it, when I come to making decisions with the council, I come in with the information that hopefully I've listened to the community and I've heard the resounding voice and the vote that I'm essentially trying to represent. So I bring that with me. And just like being a juror in a trial, we're trying to collect all the information and make decisions. And I do think that leadership style isn't about being out front and being the most outspoken. It's really about listening to your constituents and listening to your council members and balancing different viewpoints. Because I learn a lot from questions that other council members have. Every one of us picks up on a different thing. You know, a different smell or a flavor, and we explore that. And so that's the nice thing about how it's set up. We have seven different people digesting information and viewpoints from the community. So leadership isn't about necessarily being the loudest or the strongest personality. It's really about him kind of embracing the, the team approach.
Thank you. All right, one of the things we found in the Friends of Leavenworth was a real concern is the nature and the rivers. So we have a question relating to that that's come from the audience as well. Both Wenatchee and Icicle Rivers are heavily used by tubers during the summer, possibly affecting salmon spawning. Do you think the city needs to initiate some control on use of the river? That I think would be Anne.
Well, Icicle Creek's not in the city limits. The shore of the Wenatchee River is. With an environmental background, working for an environmental consulting firm, I do have some strong feelings about our natural environment and protecting it in perpetuity for, for future generations. I think that there is the potential for heavy damage in our rivers, particularly at low water times, for our fish species. Not only that, but also the shoreline environment and, and the ecosystems surrounding these water bodies. I think that there are some steps that the community can take, that the council can take, to further the protections along the areas that we do have jurisdiction on, within our city limits. And I think that that would be a great topic of discussion that would potentially start with the planning commission and end up with the city council for potential code amendments in the future.
Yes, I do think it's a big issue. And on the parks committee, we've been talking about it for a long time. And I know that sounds terrible. We've just been sitting around talking about it. But it's a complicated issue because of the jurisdiction issues. So we've been working toward possible solutions to working inter-jurisdictionally. And in this case, it probably wouldn't just be with the county and the city. It might even also be with ecology or some state level jurisdictions. The one thing we have been able to accomplish is some stricter regulations with the tubing companies and requiring them to, to do cleanup, provide bathrooms, have permits for every single tuber that goes down the river. They have to pay the city. And so, so that's been a great improvement. We've seen our parking lots and our beaches improve quite a lot from that. Of course, the use is heavy. So it's just gonna continue to be an issue until we can work collaboratively to solve it.
Thank you. Zeke, the question is about the, about the rivers being heavily used with the tubers. Do you think the city needs to institute some controls over the river? One minute.
I do think, I think that the city needs to sort of lead the way on this. I know, believe, you know, and I'm not sure just whose jurisdiction, what, what state agency, if it's DNR, who has jurisdiction over this river. But we've heard enough times from the Fish Hatchery and other agencies that the impact of the tubers is a negative one. And I think that if nothing else, instead of just standing on a, sitting on a shelf, that we start coordinating between agencies, county commissioners, and initiate the process ourselves and find out what it is, what we can do, what we can't do. But I think that anytime a resource like this is at risk, as this one is, we just simply can't stand by and I hope somebody else takes initiative.
Okay.
The city needs to take that initiative.
Thank you very much. Scott.
Thank you. I've been recreating on that river. I've been swimming in that river since I was eight years old. And only until the last few years have I faced the fact that it's almost standing room only on some days. And I've been, many times picked up cans and bottles and other garbage along the way as I floated. So it, it's, it's a problem. Because of the nature of our rivers being the boundaries and how they're in the county and, and various ways, we're gonna have to partner with the other entities to see if we can come up with a solution that will work for all the entities that have, border that river. I do think something needs to be done. I'm not sure exactly what, but it definitely needs some work.
All right, thank you.
Well, I'll just have to echo that I think this is symptomatic, though, of, of a larger problem. And I think it does need to get addressed. And I do think we have to work with at least the county and some others to do that. That, I think that's a given. But it is the broader, and that is, we're in a beautiful valley. And it's the nature of the valley here that is as much a draw as anything. It's what, somebody said it makes Bavaria work is because of the beauty in which we live. And if we don't care for that all the way down the line and figure out ways that we, you know, it's a, it's a balance. You know, how do you draw people here without, without overdoing and, and destroying the very beauty that we're trying to preserve for everyone? So it's, it's a tricky balance, but it is a responsibility that we have to be stewards of this valley in more ways than just who raps it.
Yeah, I was growing up here my whole life. I was one of those people that I, probably just even four or five years ago, I floated that river every weekend. It was my favorite thing to do in the summer. I looked forward to it all winter. I didn't go a single time this year. I think in the last couple of years, I've gone once or twice. It's not as much fun to me anymore when there's too many people. I mean, yes, you can't stop them from floating the river because it's what it is, it's a river. But if the majority of people do have a problem with it and it's gonna affect the environment, the city can't stop let people use all the parks. And the bridge there, it's all city property. And there's a lot of things we could do if it's what's best and what people in the city need. It might not be popular with businesses, but they use our parks. They're all putting in the parks, the bridge. You can't stop Fish Hatchery. Fish Hatchery can only stop that. But they'll still find other ways to get in if they truly want to. But it's gonna make it a lot harder for those businesses that pump the, you know, 800 people a day down that thing.
Yeah, most of us want simple answers for complex problems. And this is one that I've talked about in different forums. I was on the Trot Unlimited board. And Trot Unlimited decided that this was gonna be an issue that we grabbed onto and got ahold of and took leadership on. And I think everybody on the board at the time was like, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna stop tubing. So we held a workshop over at the fire hall and we had a bunch of biologists there, state and federal fish biologists. And without, unfortunately, without science backing up the harms of the environment that we see, you know, we see this, this river's being loved to death, like the enchantments. But without some kind of scientific backing, it's hard to develop policy around that. I think that the city does play an active role. We do permit a couple of entities to put in and take out on the Wenatchee. And I think the lot, well, I know the logic there is because if we don't, it's even more out of hand. So the city's answer to trying to control the tubing and garbage and all the things that come along with it is permit and put in expectations for refuse removal and sandy cans and things like that. I think it's as much of a social issue as it is an environmental one. I think we do need to find solutions, but it's not gonna be as simple as shutting the river off.
Okay, thank you.
I think Anne probably had an internal ear-to-ear grin as she was first in line to field that question. Because it's gonna be someone like Anne or maybe Jason who are the, take the lead on a particular issue like that. It's not my strong suit. I can go ahead and weigh in from somebody who does a stand-up paddleboard down there. The river, it's not as enjoyable as it was when I first got here. The crowds are bigger, more beer cans at the bottom. I, at times, wouldn't take my daughter down there on certain days and weekends just because of some of the activity that goes on, on the river. And I think that's a shame. And I don't know the jurisdictions and I don't know the rules. But if it's not gonna be the city of Leavenworth who leads an effort to go ahead and research the issue and put some kind of restrictions on to the extent that we can, if not Leavenworth, then who? But I do think collectively, hopefully, this isn't another issue that we have to go ahead and get, pay for another study on. But again, to the degree that we can, I think seven smart heads and some mayoral leadership could, could probably redirect some of the things that are bugging a lot of people regarding the river.
Okay, thank you. I think I got through everybody, right? So the last thing we have, because we, oh, Zeke already did after Mia. Didn't he? Yeah. So the last thing, we, we still have some questions. But unfortunately, if you have specific questions, you can go to the candidates. We wanna respect your time. We, we promised each candidate, we give them a minute sort of for a final sort of speech. And we will let them have that conversation. Okay, sure, I'd be glad to do that. Sure. What will you do to reach out to non-city residents who don't vote but are affected by city decisions? What's your perspective on sanctuary cities? What are your views on efforts to reduce single-use plastics by businesses in Leavenworth? Those are the things that we had so far here that we were hoping to get to, but we weren't able to. So the last we will, we will have gone through, Zeke won't be able to go first, but, that's all right. If you will take your minute, please.
Okay. I have really enjoyed serving on the council because I love our community. I love engaging with everyone. And I think it's so interesting how diverse we are as a community. Really different backgrounds, really different interests. And yet, we all live here and we love it for, for pretty much the same reasons. So my efforts have always been to sustainably help us keep a place that we can continue to live and work and play here. So thanks so much for coming out, you guys. You're an important part of the public process.
Thank you. Zeke, you've got one minute as your final little speech.
For that question?
The question is, no question, just what do you wanna say to the audience in closing?
Okay, okay, all right. Well, first off, I think it was a, a major event. Well, first off, I think it was a, a major event, even, I don't know how, how big a crowd you got, but we gotta start on community coming together and meeting candidates for, and I think that's, that's an important step, that isn't just like hap- happenstance. I think that that kind of a communication and people going that way, I think that my thing is always gonna be that we are a community, even if we have different views. And I really believe that, that community meeting, which was sort of fired up the first of this year, needs to be continued, needs to be an intentional thing that needs to happen. And I think that, that would be my point, is that we need to be talking to each other, and, and the neighborhoods need to be heard, however we can go, you know?
Okay.
They need to be heard. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bretchell?
Well, I'm experienced in managing large and complex organizations and budgets. I have proven leadership skills. I know and understand the diff, the infrastructure and the problems associated with operating utility systems. I have successfully worked with many commissions, councils, and boards. I have been active in several service organizations. I am active in promoting the virtues of this community. I have a long and deep history in this community. I'm an active listener, and I want to hear community concerns and solutions, especially solutions. I, I can lead this community to address and solve our issues. I want to be your mayor, I love this town, I love Leavenworth. Thank you.
Yes, I'm running for mayor, as I said, because I do love the community, and it's been a wonderful place to raise our family, to be involved, to be engaged. It is, I mean, I don't know of any other small town that has so many people so willing to get involved in so many different things. It is a very special place. My concern is that we keep at that special place, that we can continue to draw the right people, the, the enthusiastic people, the people that want to be here, want to live. And I've heard over and over again from employers, from the hospital, from the, that they can't get the people they want because of the lack of housing. So that is a number one issue for me. But it's because it's the heart and soul, you gotta house them if you're gonna have community. And I don't wanna see us just become a resort. You know, we're too precious, there's too much going for us, we wanna keep being a working community. And I believe I've got the experience and have done, I've built the only affordable housing that's been here in the last 30 years, so I would like to keep you going.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
I'd like to just thank everybody for coming out tonight and giving us your time and being involved and making sure that everybody's here, that you get the best for Leavenworth. I'd like to thank Friends of Leavenworth for hosting us tonight, and I hope everybody votes.
Yeah, thanks again for coming out tonight. There's better things to be doing than sitting in an auditorium for two and a half hours or hour, hour and a half. Like everybody in this room, everybody up on stage, we love this town, we care about this town. I think some of us feel like it's being loved to death, maybe a little bit. I have been so fortunate to be on the council for two years, I feel like it's been this just amazing opportunity, and it's been very fulfilling to serve all of you, that's what I'm here to do. I've, you've invested two years in me, and I think that it's paying off, and I'd, I'd really like to continue on some important initiatives that we've been, been working on. So thank you.
So I think one of the strengths of the council is simply the diversity of the council, diversity of thought, the mercy, diversity of the way problems are approached and solutions are sought after. So, and I do think, at least I'm bringing something new and different to the council in terms of my background and experience. Fifteen years of that experience was in some form of planning capacity, strategic, operational, et cetera, and health, security, budget, laundry list. But what I would like to do is help in instances where I can, help this council better think through second and third order effects of the decisions that they make, because sometimes I've seen, and can't go into the list now, but ask me afterwards if you want, but a decision made here with the intent to do that, but it actually ran counter to what our goal was. So, anyway, I think we have more good ideas collectively on that side of the stage than here, so please do stay engaged. Thank you.
Leavenworth is an incredible town and community, and I feel really lucky to be an active member and a part of it.
Thank you.
Though we may not view things the same or come to the same conclusions on certain issues, I'm so encouraged by the fact that we are an engaged community that is passionate about this community. We can all come together because we love this community and we want it to prosper, and we want it to grow for future generations. I'm really looking forward to being a council member, I'm looking forward to community building, I'm looking forward to inspiring positivity and positive interactions, active listening, strong communication between members that may not see eye to eye but have really great perspectives to, to consider. And I look forward to some open dialogue with all of you who are entrusting me to serve them properly.
You started, right? Right. I, I just wanna thank you again for being neighbors, and I found this, this quote that I, I see often, and maybe this is even a relation to you, Lino, I don't know, is Pauline related to you somehow? Okay. What she said once was, the magic of Leavenworth, the magic of Leavenworth has been that it is a place where we live, and if people come, they know it as a place where people really, genuinely live. It is not just a tourist attraction. And I think that's, you've heard that from the candidates, I think that we can see that they are, want, their concern is for this community. And, and I thank you for coming. The, the cool thing about this group of people is, they care just like you do. Not only that, but your current leadership is here too, and they're interested. And I think it'd be appropriate in this setting to thank the, like, I think the mayor, the mayor's here, I think all the other candidates, all the other council members are here. So can we give them a thanks for their service to this community over the last couple of years? And I think it's really cool that we just have had, thanks for the questions. If you have any further questions, let us know. These folks are gonna be available to talk with you, answer questions, and if you will go to the website, the FriendsOfLeavenworth.org website, we'll try to post this recording up there, probably early next week is, is the hope. So, thanks again for coming, and you guys have been a brilliant audience. Enjoy your evening. Thank you very much.